Okay, well, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Cheveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol. Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is the public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items that are on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that individuals' made public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a sign-up sheet out front. I don't know if anybody knew about it or didn't know about it. It is empty, but I will call it this time. Is there anyone out there in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Mr. Crone, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council. Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. Staff will be proposing tonight a new tax in the city of Merriam, a 1% tax. And that sounds like a small number, but in my head, it's also kind of, you know, any tax needs to be taken very seriously. I know five years ago, there was a new quarter percent sales tax to fund the community center, and that quarter percent sales tax had to go to a public vote. Two years ago, just renewing an existing quarter percent sales tax for Street and Stormwater went to a public vote. But tonight, I believe it will just be a motion of the council to approve a new 1% sale, or 1% tax in Merriam. But it won't be called that. It'll be called 1% for the arts. And that sounds a lot better than tax, of course, but I want you to really consider, I know a lot of you have talked about affordable housing in Merriam, that being a priority, and is it affordable to make housing 1% more expensive? If a developer has to give up 1% of their budget for the arts, that is not just going to be borne by the developer. They're not just going to walk away and shrug and have less profit. They're going to pass that on. That will increase the prices of those apartments or houses, whatever comes in the future in Merriam. If there are new retail establishments, that will increase their rent or their cost of the developer that will be passed on to the businesses, on to the products. There are consequences even for 1% of a tax. And so I would ask you not to require a 1% tax, maybe make it optional if a business wants to donate through the city to help art and to appreciate that, but not to make it a requirement of development in the city. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. The instance that will be on later, but I'd just let you continue to talk, but thank you for your comments, but moving on. Anyone else out there? Okay, I see no one else coming forward. The next item is on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and all items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which case that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separate. Is there anyone on the council that has any of those items that they would like to have removed? Or anyone on the phone that would like to have any item removed? Okay, I hear nothing. I see nothing. I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve Consent Agenda Items 1 and 2.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up on the agenda is the Mayor's Report, and I have no proclamations this evening, so I have a few extra things to add. But we always like to let people know kind of what I and the council members have been up to and staff sometimes, just so you know that we don't just come to these meetings twice a month, and that's the only thing we do. So, starting off with, I attended the 5701 Merriam Drive Committee Meeting, first one, and Council President Chris Hands was there in attendance as an observer. Councilmembers Jacob Leahy and Stacy Cheveta were there also, serving as our council liaisons. It started down in our Farmers Downtown Market area where we walked the 5701 property, and the recently purchased church property, we also walked that property as well, so the group could get a feel of what it is that they're going to be undertaking as they move forward with suggestions and ideas. I'm real pleased with the diverse group and the varying backgrounds of all those individuals. I'm confident they will be coming forward someday with some exciting possibilities for that property that we have located down there. Okay, I attended the Merriam Public Arts Committee Meeting. Council President Christine Hands attended as an observer. Councilmember Jason Silvers, Council Vice President Whitney Yodrich served as our council liaisons at that meeting, and are going to be on that committee meeting. We have a recommendation coming forward from that committee that we're going to be talking about a little bit later, and we'll be exciting to see that. Also came that recommendation, I'm sure we'll be hearing about that shortly, so I'm not going to go more into that. I, Vice President Christine, I and Vice President, or President, not Vice President, President Christine Hands and Assistant Administrator Jennifer Jones-Lacy attended the Merriam Park Kickoff Fundraiser Campaign for the PTA down there. And we actually got to see the KU Drumline perform down there as well. That was pretty exciting. And it's interesting that the kids walk down there to raise money for the PTA, and it's their goal to raise $20,000 this year for the PTA. So that's going to be going over about, I think, four to six-week process, whatever. So if anybody wants to get down there, make a contribution, I'm sure that's tax-deductible, and help out the kids and help out the PTA, because obviously, kids are our future. Okay, I and Christine Hands, along with numerous city staff and community volunteers, cleaned up the streamway park between 67th and 75th. I am, I have to acknowledge that I didn't get to pick up much, because I had been at another meeting, but I was there for the photo op. So the fact that I was in the picture means I helped, so, just saying. It's, okay, so I, Councilmember Hands, and Councilmember Caldol, attended the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner at the Merriam Community Center. It was an opportunity to recognize and thank the countless volunteers that serve our committees and serve at our city events and functions. There's no more asset that an individual can give, important asset that an individual can give, than their time. And all of those people give up lots and lots of hours of time, saves us a lot of money, which we won't put a dollar value on that. But anyways, an opportunity to recognize those, and they also gave away some really nice little gifts to our volunteers. Does somebody want to show one up, just to show the audience what they gave away to the volunteers and the council members? I didn't bring mine, but... Do you have your, have you seen it yet? Oh, okay, good. So we did want to recognize all those individuals, and not everyone could attend, but those that did had a really good time. Pretty cool, isn't it? Yeah, it's its own little art piece, so.
Of the community center.
Of the community center.
And snow with sparkles.
Yeah, very, very cool. Thank you, Anna, for taking care of that, and your staff, obviously, I know you had help. Okay, moving on down the list here. I and the whole City Council attended a capital improvement project tour of our city, along with numerous staff. The annual event gives us each an opportunity to see where these projects are occurring, how well they've turned out, and also look at the future projects that will be occurring over the next five years. Well, you know, we are very glad that we maintain our infrastructure as well as we do. We spend about half of our revenue on maintaining infrastructure, and that's, we're very proud to do that and divest in our city annually. Okay, I and the whole City Council attended the Merriam Park Elementary Arbor Day Event, okay, that was put on by our Public Works. Employees plant a tree at each of our two elementary schools every year as a recognition of Arbor Day. And it's, of course, as a Tree City USA, it's very important that we teach our future generations about the importance of planting trees and about the carbon sequesterage. That was easier to say than I thought. Sequestration, okay. And anyway, we want to reduce our carbon footprint, and trees help us to do that. So that's, I was glad to see all the City Council be able to attend that event as well. I attended the Legislator Town Hall Meeting down at the Sylvester Powell Community Center. All of our, well, not all, but most of our northeast Johnson County State Senators and Representatives were down there, and they gave little short speeches, kind of on what's kind of been happening and what's occurring at the state Capitol, and also some of the vetoes that the governor has issued. And that session's going to be coming to a close pretty shortly. They shared their successes and disappointments at the time. I also got to attend the Shining Mission North NJROTC Awards Ceremony, which I did not know, so I wanted to be sure and at least acknowledge those individuals this evening, is that they are the Midwest National Region Champions in the NJRC and the competition that goes on every year, our Shining Mission North students. Of course, we have a lot of Merriam residents that also are in the NJRC, and that's how I found about it, was through one of our residents that's part of that group. But I also got to meet, which I had not met before, a Navy Admiral was there handing out the awards, and so that was pretty cool, to see the Admiral. You know, but another important, part of that whole thing that I found out attending that meeting is that those kids get up there and go practice at 5:45 a.m. 5:45, roosters don't even get up that early, do they? I was very impressed. I had no idea that they'd do that before school even starts. And last but not least, I was not able to attend, but Assistant Administrator Jennifer Jones-Lacy attended the First Tier Suburbs Meeting. It's my understanding that they developed, at least Mark is hosting or developed a housing database that you can go to their site to view and see what's going on and also that meeting. So if you have any other questions, since I was not there, please see Jennifer for that. Okay, so see, we do a little more than just ten these meetings, but that's all I have for the Mayor's Report. Okay, next item up is council items. The first one is a 1% for art proposal overview. Assistant Administrator Jennifer Jones-Lacy is going to present that to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jennifer Jones-Lacy, Assistant City Administrator, and I'm here today to talk to you about how the city could leverage its funding that it already provides for public art using private sector dollars. To give you a little bit of background, as you all know, you have funded $115,000 per year for the next five years for public art through the CIP budget, and this was a council objective. And to do that, you have reconvened the Public Art Committee, and when I say reconvened, it is chaired by Phil Lammers, who was on the committee in the past. We also have Gerald Becker and Jan Shunover, but other than that, the committee has totally changed. It's been reconfigured, and we have a lot of new faces on the committee. A lot of those individuals are artists, and they are also folks who are in the art space in one form or another. We have a journalist. We have somebody who serves on other public art committees and so has experience there. So I'm really excited about the makeup of the committee and the work that we're going to be able to accomplish together, so that is very exciting. And another council objective is that you wanted to investigate opportunities to use private investment to help bolster what you are already doing in the city with public funds. And so that is why I'm discussing this 1% for art program with you today. So here's just a little overview of what other cities in the region have done something similar. So there are two communities who focus on public funding only. Kansas City, Missouri, has a 1% for art program, which is specifically funding capital improvements that they fund for their facilities. They require 1% of that to go towards public art. And then Lawrence has a similar program where it's up to 2% per year is funded based on their prior-year capital budget, but they want to dedicate up to 2% for public art. So those are all public funds. There are three other communities in the area that use, that have private funding for public art. So Leewood has a public art impact fee of 15 cents per square foot on private development, renovation, and redevelopment, and then that art is subsequently deeded to the city once it is installed. And then Roland Park has a 1% for art for all private building construction, and that has to be dedicated to public art. And they have the opportunity, and I'll go into that a little bit later, but the developer has the opportunity to either install the art directly on their property, external to the facility that they build, or they can donate that 1% to the city, and then the city makes a determination on how to spend that art, or spend that money on public art. They have an art committee and they sort of program that. So it gives the developer the choice whether they want to keep that on their own property and maintain it themselves, or if they want to just give the money to the city and say, you, you know, figure out what art you want and maintain it and all of that. The city of Leitha has 10 cents per square foot for buildings and $15 per newly constructed parking space, and that is dedicated for public art, for those developers who receive city incentives. And if the developer chooses, they can pay 75% of that public art fee directly to the city, and then their art committee will help determine where those funds will go. They do have a maximum threshold of $500,000 per project for art, so it won't be over that. No developer would provide more than that on any given piece. So if Merriam were to have a 1% for art program, those components would include several things, is what we're proposing. So it'd be on new commercial or multifamily buildings with a valuation of more than $1 million. So if it's just a simple, you know, addition or renovation, that would not qualify, but if it is a new structure that is over $1 million, then it would. The developer would deposit with the city cash, a letter of credit, or some other security in the amount of 1% of the estimated project costs prior to getting that building permit, so we would have those funds on hand, and it would just be held in escrow to the point until they decide whether they're going to install it themselves or not. And the project must be certified by a project engineer or architect, so we know that that valuation is true, and must be a permanent installation that is external to the building, so it could be a sculpture, a mural, a fountain, some sort of memorial. It just needs to be permanent. And then developers could install the art on their property, or they could donate it to the city's public art fund, and then the city could decide to use it on a future installation or maintenance. So if the public art piece is placed on private property, then it needs to be viewable at all times, and it needs to be outside of the building. The art would be submitted to the Public Art Committee for feedback, but the art committee would not necessarily have veto power, because it is a privately-owned piece, but they would help guide the artwork and make sure that, you know, it kind of fits within the, you know, Merriam themes. And then the art should be installed within 24 months of the final occupancy permit issued. And since we'll have that money in escrow, if that doesn't come to fruition and they don't work with staff to get an extension, then we can, we would have that money and we could deposit it within our art fund. So we try to structure it so that that was the case, as kind of a clawback, if you will. The developer should commit to maintaining the art as part of the maintenance, a maintenance agreement with the city. And if the developer contributes 1% to the city, then the funds will be placed in a public art fund for future art purchases or maintenance, particularly if it's that lower-dollar value. Those funds can really be helpful for maintaining some of the art we have, because there is a cost to that. The art should be placed as part of a project, and it'll be in a highly visible location. And one of the things that the art committee is currently, what we plan to focus on is developing a master plan. And so the master plan would guide locations and what type of art might fit in those locations, and so we would probably, most likely, develop that master plan before this 1% for art really comes into play. The Public Art Committee can make recommendations to the council on the location and selection of artists. And the art committee did endorse this plan, so at the last meeting, as the mayor had said, they made a motion to support this program and recommend the council consider it. And I know that our prior Sean McConnell, who was on the council before, he had indicated that that was something that they had looked at doing in the past, and so he was really excited to see this coming back before you tonight. So next steps, if you all decide to proceed with this and you want to move forward, is that staff would develop a policy or resolution for adoption for you all to consider for implementation. So I would come back to you at a future meeting, bring you something that's a little bit more thorough, and then you can make a determination if you want to move forward. We would add information to the building permit application for staff to indicate if 1% for art is applicable, so I will work with Brian and his department to, you know, make sure that we are following a process that makes sense and is logical, and that we can kind of follow the dollars and make sure that we're covering our bases when it comes to implementation of this program. And we want to, we would have to make the art committee more of a standing committee versus an ad hoc. They would meet as needed to help program the 1% for art projects, and they were all very much on board with that. You know, if it becomes a standing committee, we would talk later about, you know, how long terms are and when they'd be appointed, but it's a very passionate group, and they're very much all on board for that sort of thing. So that basically concludes my presentation, my pitch to you for this evening, and it's really just a result of your objective, that you wanted to look at some sort of private mechanism to fund some of these projects. So I'm available to ask any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Jones-Lacy? Okay, oh, Ms. Yodrich, go ahead.
Private development isn't restricted to housing, correct? That could be any project over $1 million that a developer is doing, so.
Right, so only multifamily housing, so single-family would not qualify, but yes, it would be multifamily or commercial.
Okay, Ms. Ans, go ahead.
My only comment is it seems like asking for it before you issue a building permit is awfully early in the game. I don't know if there's another obvious breaking point, but saying, "Apply for your building permit and give us this big chunk of change," seems a lot.
Yeah, it's, the building permit is one of those triggers, you know, that they have to have in order to move forward. And I know that when I was in Roland Park, and that's the mechanism that we used in order to capture that. Now, there are other steps that transpire typically before, depending on the size of the development, but usually, you know, there may be like some planning commission processes that they have to undertake. You know, there's plan review, there's all of that stuff. And so there are some other steps that they have to take before that, but, you know, I can have a chat with Brian, and we can always talk about.
So there was no resistance from developers in Roland Park with it that early in the game?
I'll be honest with you, no, there wasn't. And here's the deal, when it comes to development fees, Merriam doesn't have, we don't have really any development fees. We have application fees, we have building permit fees. We don't have, you know, stormwater assessment-related fees. We don't have street impact fees. We don't have, you know, the myriad of fees that you could have from being a developer, and we haven't increased our building permit fees in like 20 years. So our development fees are quite affordable when you look at our neighbors. And so I think it's expected when you go into any community that there will be associated fees, and to be honest, our developers have kind of gotten off pretty easy when you compare to, say, other communities. So that being the case, I wouldn't, I mean, people are going to complain, because that's what people do. However, I don't think it's going to be anything that's going to prevent somebody from, who wants to do development in Merriam, from doing so.
It just seems way early, because so many things can fall apart.
They're not paying when they submit a permit. They're not, they have through the entire life of construction, plus two years to actually fund the art.
Yeah, and that's true, and it's just a deposit. It's just a deposit. Thank you, Jacob, because that's, I'm sorry, Councilmember LaHa.
I have to say that.
Leahy, sorry. I missed the text. But yes, it's a deposit, so it's basically, you hold it in escrow, or it's a letter of credit. So it's not, you know, they may deposit cash, but it's...
That's the 1% in the writing here. It doesn't say, at least when I'm looking at it, it doesn't say a percentage of that 1% or something like that. In the program details. Okay, if we can soften that language, it just sounds like we're going to say, okay, and whatever your project is, boom, you now have to make that deposit.
Yeah, and it's not, it wouldn't be actually spent at that time, so.
Oh, I don't, I know it won't be spent, but I, again.
Sure, we can clarify that.
Got my point.
Ms. Silvers, go ahead.
This is Dave, Dave Neal raising his hand.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, kind of along the same lines, some more clarification, because if the developer is required to put up 1% of a very large development at that point, you know, I, I'm a little bit resistant to doing that. That's a hard cost at an early stage of the project that, you know, depending upon how their funding, you know, works, like I said, I just, I don't know the wisdom of that, you know, maybe some percentage of the 1%, you know, seems more reasonable to me. We don't require, you know, in the building permit process, any, as far as I know of, prepayment, you know, in escrow to, you know, funding the project cost, and that's a project cost, whether you want to call it a tax or something else, it's still a, you know, project cost, kind of the way it looks to me that you're asking them to fund in advance before the project is, you know, is even, you know, any ground is broken. And maybe Councilmember Leahy was alluding to something that I didn't quite, quite understand, there's a time period to fund that. Could you clarify that a little more?
Sure, so it's a deposit essentially that you put down with the city, and that could be through a letter of credit, it could be cash, or it could be a bond that would say that the art will be installed. If the private developer chooses to install the art on their property themselves, then they would have 24 months after completion of the project to install that art. And so what we're proposing is that if they do not meet that timeframe and they don't work with staff to potentially extend that timeframe, then we could cash in on that deposit and deposit that 1% to our public art fund. So it might be, but it's going to be held in escrow essentially, so we're not going to be, you know, cashing it in, if you will, until that time.
I would also assume, and that's all I'm doing, is that this is probably a point where there's a little bit of leverage we have against the developer. If we don't, if we want to enforce the policy, there has to be, it has to occur at some point to where we don't have someone that's under construction, and they go, "I'm not giving you 1%," or "I'm done, I'm not giving you 1%."
Could we move it, could we move it back to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy? Staff would prefer not to. No, that's fine, that's just a question.
And because then, then it really does become, it becomes a much, very contentious at that point in time. We have lots of other things at COOs, so from Billy, from a community development perspective, having it up front, so everybody knows what it is, everybody, the city is satisfied.
You can't act surprised.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right, because a lot of times in those transactions, many different players are involved, and it's usually the contractor at the end of the process who's trying to get a CFO, and they sometimes would not be aware that this is a requirement, and those contractors that get paid usually requires a CFO until they get their final payment. So from a community development standpoint, early in the process, definitely better for all parties.
Silvers, I know you had your hand up. Silvers, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, unless.
I just want to circle back, as long as it doesn't, because this really reads to me like we're asking for the full 1% of the project, and so if we soften the language that's in here, then I'm much more comfortable with it.
It's 1% of the construction cost.
I understand that, but it sounds like we, the city, is going to be holding all of that.
We will be.
We are.
But that's not what just got said, right?
No, we are going to hold it, but we're going to hold it. So, if it's, if it's a letter of credit or a bond, we won't cash in that bond, we may not cash in that bond, because if they install the piece of art on their pri- property within that 24 months after it's complete, the project is complete, then, then, you know, we won't cash it in at all. It's really just a, it's, it's a security for us to make sure that they fulfill the obligations.
And just, just so everybody understands what a letter of credit is.
I don't, that's some of the issue.
So, it's not like they're, they're putting all the money in the city's coffers.
Right.
They're delivering a letter from a bank, the bank is going to write that letter, the bank is going to make sure that it has appropriate security for the letter, and basically the letter says, "If the developer defaults by not doing the construction within 24 months, then we will pay it, no conditions attached." But, but the bank is only going to issue, usually, it's going to be the bank where the developer deposits its construction loan and everything like that, or does work with its construction loan.
And it's a percentage, it's a small percentage.
Yeah, and a bond is very similar. So, oftentimes, there won't be any cost with, associated with a letter of credit. A bond, there will be a cost, it's written on a surety company, and there is a cost associated with that, but it's a very small fraction of the total amount of the bond.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, another further question, that's all right, this is Councilmember Neal.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Neal.
The, how, how do we handle a situation where the project cost changes? You know, I would assume that that's entirely possible, that a project cost would change, you know, after the building permit process, you know, is completed even, and there's, obviously, there's a, a cost associated with, you know, or at least cost estimate usually, I assume, but I would, I would, how do we handle the situation where the construction costs, the building costs, for a variety of reasons, might change? Or also, if the ownership of the project changes, you know, say the financing doesn't all come together, and there's some additional changes later on in the, in the process, how does that? Basically, what I'm trying to do is understand the workability of determining the 1%, which might change, you know, that number might change.
Sure, so, and Brian, feel free to chime in here for me, but when we issue a building permit, you issue it based on the original estimate, you don't go back typically and...
Let me, real quick, that is not an estimate, it is an evaluation that we receive on the building permit from the ac- actual, typically, it's the actual bid cost that the developer has for the project, so, so, so it's not an estimate, it is, a better word for it is an evaluation of the project cost.
So, it's known, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's known to as best as it possibly can be at that time, and from, again, from a building permits perspective, that, that cost is not, once they put that on the building permit, their building permit fees are based on that cost, and in my experience, and nobody's come back to change that number, to rearrange the building permit fee, so, that number is, is a pretty good number.
Working in the field, it doesn't change dramatically such that it would drastically alter the 1%.
Yeah, and it, I mean, if, right, we wouldn't, if they made some minor changes, we would not demand that they come back and, you know, pony up the extra dough or whatever, it's going to be whatever was initially set.
Mr. Silvers, I know you've.
It's set at the time of the building permit and it's not going to, not, we're not envisioning that 1% changing if some, you know, some costs change along the way, some significant, or significantly change.
That's what we anticipate, that it will stay constant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Silvers, please, please go forward.
Thank you. I had a few questions that I jotted down when I was reading the packet, and I was wondering if you could just answer them real quick. Is there a chance that developers will inflate the cost of their project by 1% to cover the cost of the 1% fee?
Inflate the cost of the project to cover the 1% fee, I guess I'm not following entirely what you mean?
To try to basically fund the 1% by over inflating the estimated cost of their project?
Well, if they were to, well, a couple of things. The, they have to certify project costs, so an engineer and architect would have to sign off, you know, and when they sign off on those things, it's part of their licensure, they're agreeing to what that actual fee is, but I, I don't think anybody would want to inflate, inflate their project cost, because then everything would be more expensive for them. Does that make sense? So, if they said, "Okay, I have a $5 million facility that I'm building, and it's only, you know, $4,500 or whatever," they would have to pay, you know, and if that were what was certified, then they would have to pay more than they would have otherwise, so I don't know why.
I understand, and let's see, I was thinking that they would come in under budget, and if, I understand what you're saying, so it probably wasn't the best.
Well, I think where you were, at least, I, I would extrapolate from what I believe you're saying, Mr. Silvers, is if they were asking for TIF funding, they might come in and say that the project is a little bit higher, so they could get more TIF funding, which would all help offset the cost of that from the developer, so I could see that one might apply.
Yeah, I mean, I was.
Where they might want to do it in that case.
Okay, yeah, and this is, this is totally divorced from any sort of incentive-type funding, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
My other question was, over time, will the maintenance costs for the city, for all these art projects that get approved through new construction, new development? Let me just read it as I wrote it, because I kind of got off the subject. Will the maintenance costs affect the city's budget over time?
So, if it's privately owned, then no, because if it, if it's an installation that is on private land, then that private developer or owner will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of that piece. If they donate it to the city, then yes.
I was.
We will have to be responsible for that maintenance, and we do budget annually within our CIP art maintenance for the existing sculptures that we have, and it's the same thing for the $115,000 that we're funding through our budget now. There is a maintenance cost, like anything you install, there's always a maintenance cost, and so we always factor that in, and it would just be something that we would factor into our CIP budget for annual programming.
Okay, but it will increase over.
Over time, the more art you get, yes, absolutely.
Read through, Mr. Silvers.
I still have one more.
One more.
My last question is, because one of our initiatives is affordable housing, and the million-dollar trigger for this, I would think for some multifamily housing, isn't that high. Will this possibly prevent affordable housing projects?
You know, I can't really speak to that, as far as if, if it would be a deterrent for affordable housing, that would be something that, you know, the developer would have to, you know, potentially make that case to you all, that this isn't going to prevent me from doing this project here in Merriam. A lot of times, I know that if there is affordable housing going in, they typically come to the city to ask for some sort of bonus incentive anyway, and so, you know, those would be conversations you would have to have with those developers, so I can't really speak to that.
Ms. Hadrich, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we don't have to make a motion or a vote tonight, right? So, do we think we have enough information to let staff explore these options and come back with a draft, if that's something we're wanting to do?
I have a few questions.
Okay, go for it.
Lahe, go ahead.
What was the plan for it to start? Would it be after we pass the motion, or 2024?
You know, we can set a timeframe, typically, it would just, the idea is that it would start after, you know, publication, like our typical ordinances do, but if you would prefer for it to start in the beginning of 2024, you know, we could always set those terms.
I was just, I was just curious what the timeline was. Is there a way that we can exempt affordable housing from what qualifies?
You could, you can do whatever you want to do.
The other one, if the art committee only has, is only able to recommend, does anybody have veto power over what is art? I know art is subjective, but what prevents somebody from abusing the system?
So, with the, the private installations, that's kind of why we wanted to write it in a way that would bring that, those private installations before, a group of, I'm going to say, experts on public art, to kind of give some feedback and, you know, some, some insights as to, you know, the idea and what they, what they think about it, and, you know, if it's something that the developer is seeking city incentives for, we definitely have a lot more leverage there. We have some leverage in the fact that, you know, there's still the process of approval that goes through with city planning, you know, if something is, if they wanted to install something that was, you know, they're not going to be able to install something that's inappropriate, we would have, I mean, that's, that's another matter, but ultimately, there is no, on the private installation, there's no veto power, but there is some advice that we hope to give to the developer, and at least in, in what I've seen in the past when this works, the developers really do listen to that advice, and I've seen it where they have changed recommended installations based upon recommendations of a art committee, so. But if it's on public land, then obviously, art committee would make the recommendation to you all to make that decision.
This one's more for Brian, on what constitutes a new building versus a renovation or addition? If we're, is it like the new hospital tower? If it's like a new wing to a building, is that a new building?
In the discussions with this, a great example is the hospital tower, they're renovating the old tower, that would not, and under my understanding, be included in this program.
A major square footage addition?
Probably, yeah, so a good example is going to be the cancer center, it is going to be attached to the building. From, from my perspective, that would have been something that I would have considered as new construction, yeah, because new walls, new roof, so yes.
All right, that's all, those are all my questions.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, Dave Neal again. I wanted to ask, I mean, kind of alluded to, or alluded to earlier, we were discussing the costs for the 1% of the ca- of the construction cost, and I'm, I was wanting some clarif- clarification on whether or not such costs, how they would fit into the state definition for eligible TIF reimbursement, or would they, because I would prefer that they not be eligible TIF expenses, because that's kind of like, I don't know, I, like I said, I just kind of wonder, have you guys looked into that at all? Do they fit in any way in the TIF structure?
It, it would depend on what it is. If it was standalone art, it probably would not fall into TIF, but if it was a fountain or something more structural, I mean, it would just depend on what it is, that, that's, that's the best answer I can give you, because there is, there isn't going to be a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, okay.
There also is, I know this because I'm looking at this for another municipality, any public construction, you, you normally can't go vertical with TIF money, but you, you can actually do that if the TIF benefits a, a public entity, where you can go vertical with it. So, if you had, I mean, I, I would think that that would fall within that provision, that you could, that if it was a city-owned project, that you, you could use TIF monies for it. Just depends.
Okay, are we?
But, but we certainly, I'm sorry, as a follow-up, we certainly, if there was a TIF project, we would have other mechanisms through the redevelopment agreement to say what we are and are not reimbursing. So, we, we, through the redevelopment agreement, for any public incentives, could say, "You shall or shall not submit whatever we want, whether eligible or otherwise."
Okay, yeah, I, I would hate to see, you know, the public art funding be something that then becomes a, something that the school district ends up paying for because of property tax abatement, you know, I think the developer should hopefully be able to pay the cost of, of that public art, for it to make sense to me.
Okay, are we wrapping up, or at this point, I, I think what we, I think Ms. Jones-Lacy once would be like a head nod, whether to move forward with the intent of maybe bringing this forth again at a later date, of a more developed plan toward a 1%? Is that, okay, are those, those head nods that you would like to move forward, is that what I'm saying?
Please.
Yes, okay.
Okay, great.
Do you need anything else from us?
I don't think so, I'll just plan to come back, I'll do a little research on whether it's a resolution or a policy, and then bring that back to you at another future meeting, so, thank you very much.
Would, would it be possible to get an idea of what this, what this would have generated in, towards a fund, or a total dollar amount for 2021 or 2022, just to see what 1% of new construction?
Yeah, absolutely, and I did do that on Merriam Grand Station, so I can, I can look at that and, and report back to you what that would look like, if that, does that work just to kind of show you, hey, if Merriam Grand Station were a new, or would you like to see it for a full year?
I was thinking like, for this, for the city for a year, because I think either we're going to get a bunch of small dollar contributions to the art budget coffers that will either supplement or amend, or take care of that committee for a couple of years, or not, and I was just kind of curious.
Sure.
What it would generate in a year for public art.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones-Lacy. Okay, it looks like next item up on the agenda would be our draft CIP, and it looks like Ms. Engle's approaching the podium.
This is our first budget presentation for the fiscal year '24 budget, exciting time of year for our finance staff and our department heads, as we put together the budget for the next year, for the next five years when it comes to CIP, to meet the goals and objectives of the council, and, and by extension, the residents of the city of Merriam. So, the, the first section of the budget that we usually present to council, at least since I've been here for 10 years, is the CIP. I've shared this in the past, I'm going to share it again, I think it's fantastic, that the first thing that we do in Merriam is actually establish a CIP and kind of use that as the base of operations for building the budget. In many other communities, what they do is they, they work on the general fund, they work on all the other aspects of the budget, and then it's always the CIP that gets short-changed, it's always, here's what's left. And so, what ends up happening is infrastructure goes up against desires to improve parks, public safety, roll the mill back, a variety of things, and the CIP somehow gets short-changed, and as I'm sure you're all aware, once you get behind on CIP, it becomes very, 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 very expensive to get caught up. So, taking the opportunity to take care of our streets from a planning standpoint, early on in the budget process, not that there's not give and take, and not that it's not a puzzle that we all have, that we have to put together, but the fact that we talk about CIP first, I think is fantastic, just simply because it is a very expensive, impactful, and visible part of our operations, and it's a core function of what we do, it's why we're here, it's why our taxpayers pay their tax dollars. So, I'm going to jump into our 2024-2028 five-year CIP plan, this is a follow-up from our CIP tour that we had. Uh, this is a follow-up from our CIP tour that we had. We went out and we took a look at some of these uh, items that are in the five-year plan. Uh, the CIP, well, we'd call it a five-year CIP. It's actually five one-year plans. All we're actually going to ultimately be asking for is approval of a one-year, and that's the 2024 fiscal budget for CIP, which we are not asking for this evening. There will be no motions. This is simply just a uh, survey of all of the things that we are including in that budget. I believe all of you have your CIP packet. It was uh, in the packet also, or your CIP folder. It was in the packet also. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump in, cover all of the things that are in the five-year CIP, be happy to answer questions as we move through that. Uh, and then we'll summarize it up at the end of my part of the presentation with just the items that are in the 2024 budget. And then we're gonna turn it over to the finance director, and Donna's gonna cover the financials of the CIP. Uh, and at any point during that, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. So we're gonna start with our major projects. The, the major project that we have in the budget is the major project that has been in the budget for many, many years. That is the Upper Turkey Creek Project. Uh, we have uh, increased Merriam share just because we anticipate there will be an increase in costs. So we now have $10 million in the CIP uh, to cover whatever the potential cost of that project is. Uh, we have that at $61 million. I will tell you, it is very likely going to be more than $61 million. We do not know what it is going to be, but we are hedging our bets and making sure that however big that number gets, we at least have hel- have a place, placeholder in there so that when we have a public conversation or a conversation at the council level of, should we go forward, we'll know that we have the money. Now, just because we may have the money for this project, again, doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do depending on what the project actually looks like. But wanted to let the council know that we have included uh, some additional funds to the tune of a couple extra million dollars in the five-year CIP. I think those pop up in 27 and 28 is when the, the lump of them do. And you'll see that in some of Donna's uh, ending fund balance graphs. Uh, medium projects, this is where a big bulk of our projects are. You got Merriam Drive, Johnson Drive to 55th, 50th Terrace Drainage, 49th Street, Schweitzer to Antioch, uh, Cars Project, Merriam Drive, 55th to 50th Terrace, the 2025 Street Drainage Rehab, Merriam Drive, Shawnee Mission Parkway to Johnson. We've got the undergrounding of utilities, and we've got the Carter Avenue, Turkey Creek Drive to Carter. And I'm gonna cover each one of these individually, which will just be the engineering, and that's in the 28 section. This is what we call our medium projects. Merriam Drive Improvements, you see some renderings here, Johnson to 55th. This is moved back to, it, it will likely get started this year, but it will carry over into 2024. So we've moved some projects around in the budget with, to take, take advantage of the funding, take advantage of, or, or in recognition of staff time and things like that. So we've kind of cleared the decks in 2024 to allow for this Merriam Drive Street Improvement from Johnson to 55th to uh, overflow into next year. Uh, it's Merriam Drive. I think we're all familiar with this. It's Mill and Overlay Shared Due Sidewalks, Curbs, Gutters, uh, a lot of additional uh, updates, some street scape improvements, and some LED street lighting. Uh, total project cost is $4.7 million. We anticipate getting uh, $1.3 million from Cars, and we're using $1.6 million of ARPA funding uh, to go with our quarter cent sales tax for that particular project. So that'll be 23, 24. Uh, the 50th Terrace Drainage, this is uh, in anticipation of our 49th Street. This is out to design, I believe, right now, so it will be a 2024 construction project being designed currently. Uh, when we took the tour last year, this is the one we stood at the church, and we looked down into the backyard where you had basically an open channel that opened up, and we've got water that kind of wipes out a, a residence backyard to, to go back into the ground. Uh, so, and it's undersized pipes, so we will be upsizing some of these pipes, uh, lining some of them where necessary. Uh, and the sales tax will be paying for this. It'll be about $1.5 million projects in, in 24. Again, under design right now. Next one's our 49th Street Cars Project. This is a standard project. It's, well, what, what we call standard now, meaning like our 55th Street, very similar, 49th Mill and Overlay Sidewalks on the south side. So it will have sidewalks on both sides, curb gutter, ADA ramps. It's $3.2 million project. Cars will pay for approximately half of that. Uh, that is under design right now, I believe. Yes, sir. Merriam Drive, 55th Street to 50th Terrace. This is another Cars Project. So this is the north extent of Merriam Drive. So this will be from 55th, which Sonic, up to 50th Terrace. It had originally gone all the way to Antioch, but as a result of the Merriam Connected Corridor Study that we did with Overland Park and KCK, um, we have isolated, if you will, the, um, and created another project, which I'll share with you shortly, for the Antioch Exchange with Overland Park. So that's why we stopped this at 50th Terrace, but this is a Cars Project. Essentially, this will marry up with what we're doing south of 55th Street. So we will have bike lanes, sidewalks, curb gutter, pavement markings, uh, all the additional upgrades to this particular project. 2025 Street and Stormwater Drainage Rehab. This is a project that we took a look at over at the Park 61st and Hardy to 59th. Uh, this was really a project, we have a council goal that I can't remember verbatim what it is, but essentially what we called it, minimize disruption by maximizing disruption. Anytime that we have a variety of maintenance programs that are happening in one particular neighborhood, meaning this neighborhood needs new sidewalks, this neighborhood needs a Mill and Overlay, this neighborhood needs new lights, uh, this neighborhood has drainage improvements, and we look at that and we say, hey, these might be three or four different things that are really maintenance updates. Neighbors don't look at it like that. Neighbors look at it and say, hey, that's a construction project, and they're not gonna take kindly if we go in there and we tear it up this year, and then we come back, tear it up next year, and we tear it up the next year, or we tear it up at the beginning of the year, then tear it up the next year. So this was a great example of where what we're doing is we're essentially minimizing disruption by maximizing it. We're gonna go in there, we're gonna tear the heck out of this neighborhood, and over the course of about four months, fix everything that we need to fix, and it may be six months, eight months, I'm not sure, I'm kind of winging it there. But we're gonna go in there, we're gonna tear it all up at once. Uh, so that's why it kind of looks a little disjointed, but we're calling it a Street and Stormwater Drainage Rehab. But it's really because we've got a variety of maintenance things that need to incur in there. Some of them related, some of them not, but we only want to be in there once. Uh, Merriam Drive, Shawnee Mission Parkway to Johnson. This is the south extent of Merriam Drive. This is Cars Project, $3.9 million uh, for 27, 28, Mill and Overlay, Curbs, Gutters, ADA Ramps, Pavement Markings. This is the south extent of that. Uh, depending on if and when what we do with the creek project, it's possible that this project, we might move around. We might move this out a year or two. Uh, we'll just, we reserve the right for it to change. Again, this is 27, 28, so we've got a couple of years to kind of figure out exactly where things are going before we lock these things in with the county. Uh, Undergrounding Utilities, this is a TIF project, uh, $4 million, relocate all the utilities between essentially the highway and Antioch, uh, 62nd right here to 64th on the backside of Kmart. Uh, this is a project that because of the cost of it, we have it in the budget. We've created a project page. This will come back to council for approval. We are including it in the budget. We are including, including it in the CIP uh, simply because if council approves it, this is where it will reside. But we recognize and we want to acknowledge that council has not approved this yet. There is no obligation for council to go forward, forward with this, but we needed to talk about it. We needed to put it in the CIP. Uh, because it's TIF funding, uh, or at least we're proposing and recommending that it be TIF funding, if for some reason it doesn't, it doesn't impact the CIP. If it goes forward, it doesn't really impact the CIP in terms of the quarter cent sales tax or the general uh, sales tax that goes and funds other projects. So if this happens or doesn't happen, it really doesn't impact your CIP other than the TIF funding portion of it. Carter Avenue, Turkey Creek Drive to Carter. This is uh, a Mill and Overlay Curbs, ADA. This is just the engineering, because this will be a 29 project. So this is the last year of the five-year CIP. This will go into engineering uh, for construction in 29, at least currently, that's the proposal. So those are your medium projects. Here's your medium project cer- uh, summary from 24 to 28. A- any questions about those particular projects? Okay.
Yeah.
Seeing none? We'll move on to our minor projects. Minor projects are downtown revitalization, which is a multi-year uh, initiative. Park and Rec Master Plan Implementation, Park Transit Improvements, which is a council goal, uh, Johnson Drive Street Improvements. 71st Street Reconstruction, West Vernon Improvements that we were able to move up in the CIP at council's direction. Merriam Connected Corridor Improvements, which I mentioned a couple of seconds ago. And then our annual programs. I think it's important, even we don't, we don't have dollar signs affixed to our annual programs on this slide. We spend lots of money maintaining these things. We don't just replace streets. We don't just repair them. Well, we don't just re- replace them, we repair them. We go in, we take care of them. You know, if you repl- if you build something and then you just wait till it falls apart to build it again, you've lost a whole lot of additional time that you couldn't spend, a whole lot of money, that if you catch it at certain points as that asset degrades, you can prolong the life of it for considerably less than a full replacement. So that's why uh, we spend a lot of money on our uh, maintenance program. So our maintenance program is small drainage projects. We have things that are on some of these lists, but sometimes we just have these because stuff breaks it. We don't even know what's gonna break, and it's good to have this money set aside. Small drainage projects, sidewalk maintenance slash repair residential LED conversion, traffic signal upgrades, uh, pedestrian and bike mobility program, and then we've got the five-year art program, which we're uh, also calling a maintenance program. So the first project's downtown revitalization. Uh, this is uh, in each of the next five years, a total of 2.3 million dollars that's in there. Uh, we've got $800,000 of that programmed in 24 to implement 5701. Should we want to implement something at 5701, that committee's just been re-energized. So uh, as we, as they explore the opportunities for that property and what they could, should, would, want to recommend to the council, we want to make sure that there's funding available. So that $800,000 is clearly up to the council's discretion. Actually, all of it is up to the council's discretion to spend. But because we've heard loud and clear, and you'll see this in a future slide, that the public would like us to invest in downtown, reinvest in downtown, take care of downtown, we need to make sure that we have the funds, whether that's to implement a plan, whether that's to acquire property for a public good or the creek project, or just because we feel like we want to acquire property. This would be where that would come from. If we get into a situation with one of our budgeted downtown Merriam, or not even downtown, Merriam's Drive project plans, and we need some additional funds, we would, we would tap this as a resource. So uh, this one doesn't have a whole lot of specific funding, other than to say this is gonna go to downtown, again, at the discretion of the city council. Park and Rec Master Plan, this is new in the CIP, so we would do a master plan in 25. We were budgeting $125,000 with implementation from 26 to 28 at $250,000 a year. That money could be used in those individual years, or it could be used to carry over if there was some sort of project that we wanted to implement. We've thrown around the idea of pickleball at uh, at Waterfall Park or things like that. We might save the, that money and roll it together, similar to the art budget, where we might use that in multiple years. Or we might use it in individual years, but the out-years, meaning 26, 27, and 28, is implementation. But we anticipate that the master plan itself would cost $125,000. So that is a new, that's a new project. Public Transit Improvements, this is a city council goal, basically an annual uh, program to improve public transit stops. We have ongoing conversations with KCAT, or actually the Joe, about ridership and how permanent some of their stops are. There's been a, uh, there's been a willingness from the council to want to put up money to make more permanent stops for uh, for riders. So we want to make sure that we have money. I think we have $15,000 in each budget of each budget year to, what I say, appropriately address each of those stops to make sure that if we find a place that that needs a stop, is that a bench? Is that a bench? Is that a covered bench? Is it trashcans? What is it? Do we need to acquire a right-of-way or easements? We want to make sure that we have money for that also. So this is almost kind of like a maintenance budget. But i- it is an initiative. We understand it's initiative based on goals and objectives. Johnson Drive Street Improvements, this is uh, Mackey to East City Limits. Uh, so this is Mill and Overlay, Curb Gutter. We uh, did part of this project two years ago, 2020, three years ago. Uh, this is to finish it off to East City Line, uh, East, I'm sorry, East City Limits. So this would be a million-dollar project, half of which would be covered by, approximately half of which would be covered by Cars. 71st Street Reconstruction, uh, this is the engineering only in 28. This is a, one of the last two uh, non-modern profile streets we have in the city. So this is 71st Street off of Schweitzer. It runs east. I'm sorry, it runs, yeah, runs east off of Schweitzer and dead ends in the creek. Uh, it's kind of has, it looks like Farley looked maybe about eight years ago. Kind of has a rustic old look to it. Um, uh, it's got three homes at the end of it, four homes at the end of it. But it's, it's, it's a street that's, it's our street. We have to take care of it, even though it kind of has an old country road appeal to it. Uh, but we're gonna need to go in there, and when we do, if we're gonna take it up to modern profile, it's gonna be a substantial project because it's really just a hunk of asphalt that takes you from Sw- from, from, from Schweitzer back to the creek. So that's uh, that's currently in there for engineering 28, and it'll show up in 2029. And then West Vernage, uh, Wes Vernon Place Drainage, I'm sorry. Uh, this is a quarter cent sales tax project, $1.7 million. This is to bring uh, the streets and the drainage in West Vernon Place up to APWA standards. Correct? All right, look at that, thumbs up. Uh, this is gonna be replacement of curb and gutter. Uh, we will have a conversation again because modern APWA profile streets, and when we tear them up, they have sidewalks. We know that this was a great conversation. I enjoyed being yelled at when I had it with them, but we're probably gonna have it again. It's what we do. We have those conversations again and again. Uh, so uh, they clearly will have the ability to say no, and we don't have to have sidewalks, but this would be the time to have that conversation again, since we'll have the curbs tore up. Uh, and then we'll also partner that with a uh, Mill and Overlay. Uh, there, one of the cool features of this is there's actually a water treatment. What's the word that we're looking for? So at the, at the base of it, where the water exits and runs out to the creek, there's actually a water.
Best manager.
Best manager, there we go, BMP, Best Management Practice, uh, that actually helps improve water quality. Uh, those things are becoming more and more important to the county, to the state, uh, where they measure the water quality coming into our community. They measure it out. Uh, these are the type of things that where we can do them, if we can invest in them, while there is some additional maintenance on them, because we have to take care of these systems. They, they're, they're probably the right thing to do if we can find the right mix of places to put them and um, uh, ease of maintenance. Uh, then last for our minor project summary is our Merriam Connected Corridor Improvements. This is essentially the, what is currently projected to be what they're calling a peanut at Antioch and Merriam Drive. Uh, they are doing engineering and design. They're doing engineering right now, not design, engineering. They're doing engineering right now, so that engineering will inform what this project actually looks like. So it's out in 2028, so we have plenty of time to like it, to not like it, to change it, to have some feedback on it. I mean, it's part of the plan, so it, that's kind of the direction that we're heading, but we have some time before we actually have to start to pull trigger on it. But that's why we pulled that Cars Project back from Antioch to 50th Terrace, because we would, that would be what would cover this particular uh, section of Merriam Drive. So a summary of our minor project summaries, downtown revitalization, park and rec master plan, uh, park, uh, transit, Johnson Drive, 71st, West Vernon Place, Merriam Connected Corridor, as well as all of our annual maintenance programs. Any questions about any of those particular projects?
Mayor, this, this is Dave Neal. Um, wanted to ask a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Neal.
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask about the West Vernon Place um, project. I know that, I mean, we all know that um, there was significant resistance when we put in the budget. Um, the sidewalk uh, project originally without, and people seemed to be quite um, surprised by that. And the resistance was pretty, pretty strong and overwhelming within, you know, at the, at the point um, when the project was, I remember, almost was ready to go to bid. And I'm, I'm wondering, have we done any, uh, and I believe we should do some outreach to the neighborhood um, to sort of inform them that we are either considering sidewalks again, if that's what the case is, as part of the project, and uh, possibly use some of our, our survey capabilities to get the sense of, of how they feel about it. And if not, uh, to, well, either way, to um, provide some rationale and justification for doing that, if that's the decision that the council ultimately makes. I, I'd like to know if there's still that same level of resistance that there was, you know, a couple of years back. Um, rather than, I mean, we may have new residents in here that feel totally differently than they did back then. So um, is there a way to uh, you know, to communicate proactively with the residents in West Vernon Place at an earl- at this early stage of the process? Are there any plans to do that?
Uh, well, it doesn't go to design till 26, so there was no plans to engage them three years early. But yeah, we, and I would, my inclination is, is that, yeah, we will need to have a communications outreach effort with them, but I, three years in advance, a lot of things can change in three years. And I, so yeah, I was not anticipating doing that in 26. And I, so yeah, I was not anticipating doing that in 2023 for, again, a project that goes to design in 2026. And, and I would imagine that probably the resistance is probably the same as it was a couple of years ago. Now, we have received an email or two, not that an email or two changes anything, from people that would like sidewalks there. But I think there were people that would like sidewalks there when we had this conversation before. But yeah, I didn't have any intent of doing a three-year in advanced outreach.
Okay, no, that's understandable. What is the, I mean, is it mandatory that, that sidewalks be included in the, in the, the stormwater project, you know, in this project, which is drainage, has a large drainage component?
I, it, it is not, it's not mandatory. So we've got some ADA restrictions. Well, we've got two things that are going on here. Where the, the option that the council selected for West Vernon was to bring it up to APWA standards. To say that we're constructing a street to APWA standards and completely discount sidewalks kind of is not bringing it up to APWA standards, even though we're talking about the drainage for it. But then there's also an ADA requirement that in streets that can have sidewalks, when you're redoing the streets, which we will be doing with the Millen overlay, you have to make best effort to, to make them ADA compliant. Now, best effort does, doesn't mean that you have to put it there. We are doing a Millen overlay in Sherwood Forest. And because of the right-of-way, the size of the street, and the grade of the street, we can't get ADA into that neighborhood in many places. So we are not putting it in there. I would anticipate that we would have similar, we would have similar situations in West Vernon. But again, I, I'm of the opinion that we should have the conversation again because we're in there tearing the street up. And I think we need to at least cover ourselves from an ADA standpoint, which that's not what we were doing when we were in there before and we started the conversation, is we were just going in to do sidewalks. We weren't redoing the street. So it's really, it's the, it's the project that triggers the sidewalk conversation.
Right, yeah, no, that's, well, you know, I appreciate the, the information because I think, you know, we do need to have that conversation in a more robust way than we did the last time through. And, you know, so that we can make a fully informed decision on both what the residents think and what we need to, you know, do to make it compliant in different ways. And so I appreciate hearing that, so that's good. And yeah, I'm fine, that's fine with, I mean, I agree that far out, probably it's a little early. But, you know, probably sooner rather than, you know, the, when it's coming up for a vote, you know, would be good. And I'm talking about in the, in the current year, you know, budget for the next year.
Any other questions about minor projects?
Any other questions from the rest of the council?
Okay, now we're going to jump into our Millen overlay. I'm not going to read these, you can look at these. But we have a Millen overlay program, programmed for the next five years. Pretty robust, again, if we take care of our streets, we don't have to replace our streets as often. I have not shared in several years, but there is actually what they call a degradation curve. And if we take care, if we strategically hit our streets as they're starting to fall apart and get them back up through Millen overlay, we can actually delay and prolong when we have to replace them. So that's the value of a Millen overlay program. There's some streets that don't, there are some cities that don't have as robust of a Millen overlay program. They just install streets and then they let them fall apart. They crack, you know, they crack seal them, or they fill, you know, the potholes. And then when they are beyond doing that anymore, they just replace them. I don't think that that's probably the smartest way to go about it. I think if I can spend $250,000 Millen overlaying a section of street, and I can get another seven to 10 years out of it, I think that makes a heck of a lot more sense than rebuilding a street. When you see how expensive these streets are, especially these cars projects on these major streets, they're $3, $4 million. And I doubt that by '26, '27, '28, they're going to be any less expensive. So you can see in there's, we've got a pretty robust '24, '25, '26, by a million and a half dollars, probably 1.4 on average those three years, '27, '28. That drops off a little bit, but that's because, again, the creek project pops up in there, which Donald will cover when she goes over the, the financials. So we spend a little bit less money in those two years because that, that money's earmarked for somewhere else. So our 2024 construction summary is our underground utilities. Mariam Drive, Johnson Drive to 55th Street, our 50th Terrace drainage program, I'm sorry, improvements, our 25 street and drainage improvements, the engineering, Millen overlay program, downtown revitalization, public art project year one, and our public transit improvements. Those are our 2024 summary. Those are, again, those are the things that we'll be formally asking for approval for when we approve the budget with the CIP as part of the larger budget. Last slide I have is just again, our downtown Mariam corridor. As we've, I've shared this the last several years. We've heard loud and clear that we need to be focusing on downtown. We need to be taking care of our assets downtown, reinvigorating downtown in areas where we can be reinvigorating downtown and just overall investing in downtown. You can see that in our five-year CIP, we have almost $27 million pledged towards at least the Mariam Drive corridor. It's not just downtown, but I mean, it's all connected. It's a main thoroughfare entryway and exitway from our community. So about $27 million in there, a pledge to our downtown Mariam corridor. So happy to answer any questions you may have about any of those projects, the '24 projects or the ones in the out years. Again, it's a plan. We reserve the right to change some of those things as we go, whether due to engineering or financing. Quite often, sometimes things get moved up because they age a little bit quicker than we thought they would. But that's how it goes. We, we're pretty, pretty sure that '24 is going to be what '24 is, though, so.
Questions for Mr. Engel? Mr. Leahy?
I have a quick comment. I want to thank you and staff for live streaming the CIP tour on Friday and going through the effort to make that available for those who couldn't attend.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel?
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Donna to bring it home.
All right.
So the best part of the presentation, the finances.
I looked at it, it's looking good.
So what do we do whenever we're looking at the finances with the five-year CIP? We look at several different factors. We look at all of the revenue growth for the, and the expenditure trends with the general fund. We look at, based on that, how much money can the general fund transfer over to the CIP? How much are we having to spend on the bonds? What must the CIP contribute for bond payments? How much do the CIP cost? And can we bring in other grants and funding from other people? So the CIP funding that we have, we put up to half of the 1% city sales tax into capital projects. Of course, we put the quarter cent sales tax for streets and stormwaters. We put the city share of the Johnson County Courthouse sales tax. Now, that expires in 2027, and so that's beginning, the sunset of that is beginning to happen fairly soon. That's about $350,000 a year to us. So we'll have that much less in funding starting, starting then. We get grants from county, state, or federal government. And then we use some of our TIF funds for capital projects, whenever those projects are in the TIF area. This is our five-year capital improvement plan forecast. It shows that all the revenues and expenditures that we have coming in in our ending fund balance, we can see there are estimated capital projects. Towards the bottom, we're, we're going anywhere from 8.5 million up to 11.5 million a year. It's a fairly robust program, and that's more than what we have been spending the last few years. We've had a few smaller years, so. We end up with an ending fund balance of 15.5 million. When you look at how those fund balances look graphically, I think it's easier to see than maybe looking at that, that big chart. The general project fund balance, that can be used on any CIP project that the city and the city council chooses to approve. The street and stormwater sales tax, that's obviously coming from the quarter cent sales tax and has to be used for those purposes. And then the TIF funds. And so you see that we start out relatively high and it drips down. That's typically what you see at this time of year. We budget conservatively, and that's not surprising. If in '26, we're still seeing '28 being that much diminished, the city council has the ability to shift priorities and decide if that's acceptable. But these balances keep us within our city goals of fund balance goals. So we're still okay on that part. Project expenditures, as far as where they're broken out, you see the majority of our projects are that stream and, street and stormwater. And that's where the majority of our cars projects would also fall, so that's the big guy. Our Upper Turkey Creek is also, those last three years, '26, '27, '28, the lightest blue is, is going to be a major portion of what's going on during those years. Really dry. So then we have all of the projects in total. General projects, we're averaging about $1 million until we get to those last three years where it jumps up for the Turkey Creek project. We've got our $4, $5 million a year for our street and stormwater, special sales tax, maintenance program. And then that bottom is our total, and total projects for all of those combined is about $65.4 million, which is an amazing number. I think this is really good news. This is talking about how we're funding our debt service. We have two GL bonds outstanding. One was a refunding of some older projects. That gets paid off this year in 2023, and then we still have bonds outstanding on the community center. In the past, we were transferring $500,000 to a million over from the capital improvement fund to subsidize that debt service because there wasn't enough in sales tax and property tax. But now that that one bond, we're getting it paid off. And then also, our sales tax have seen some growth. We're no longer going to have to subsidize the debt service. And so that leaves that $500,000 in the CIP fund for future projects. So obviously, if sales tax decrease at some point, we might have to reinstate that subsidy. But right now, it doesn't appear that we would need to. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one. We also are going to be retiring some additional debt service in '27.
Correct, that, that will get rid of the community center bonds in '27, and then we'll be debt-free. Yes, that is correct.
Could you say that again? It's debt-free, right?
Debt-free.
I think, I think that, that warrants saying again. I mean, you know, we've got a facility over there that is, that is a fantastic facility, still a brand-new facility, still really, as Anna says, you know, kind of getting it out on the highway and taking it for a, for a drive and seeing what it can do. And we, in our five-year plan, have the bonds expired. I mean, and not even in the fifth year of the plan, in the fourth year of the plan, we will have that facility paid for. That is fantastic and has saved millions of dollars in interest payments on that facility. So I think that that's something we should be very, very proud of.
Any other questions for Donna?
Just one last quick slide. Much as Mr. Engel has already said, the program is just a plan, and we're going to change it every year and update it. The only part that really is enshrined into the budget will be 2024, and that would occur whenever you adopt the 2024 budget in August. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, anything further to cover on that before we go to the next item?
Not on the CIP, no, sir.
Okay. Well, I think you're back up then, Director Oliver.
Okay. I'm not going to have a lot of comments on the finance report. It was included in your packet. Everything continues to be going along as we expect. The audit has been completed. Tara will be here with the auditors, the first meeting in June, to talk to you about the results of the audit. We are getting a clean opinion again, everything went well. So we're excited about that. And as you know, we're neck-high into the budget discussion. So we look forward to talking to you about those later in the, the year. If there's any questions.
Any questions on the monthly report for Director Oliver?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like next item up would be community development update. Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Evening, Mayor, council members, Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. Just a few items to update you on in community development. First of all, it is lots of rain, starting to get a little bit warm out there. So it's tall weeds and grass season. So we will be starting to pursue those as the weather gets the grass to grow. Also be looking at making sure folks are keeping the outdoors, areas around their homes nice and neat. Again, typical time of year for this, springtime to start getting out there and paying particularly the tall weeds and grass and looking into those items. On the grant front, had a number of applications come in, particularly since the highlights went out and for the property tax rebates, we've had a number of those come in that we've been reviewing and processing. And then exterior grants, the stability grant, particularly exterior grant, have a lot of interest in that, so have a lot of folks doing projects. Mr. Zies is out there, helping them, keeping track of those projects and getting folks through that process. And then just a couple of updates on Mariam Grand Station. As I've mentioned a number of times, we continue to work with them. Granted, it's a separate project, but the underground utilities along Shaw Mission Parkway, again, hope to in the next 30 to 60 days have a for you summary and overall cost of that project for you all, for your consideration. So that is still going forward. I had a meeting with the Evergy and their engineer last week, and they are still, had a few questions for us, but they're still in process of getting those plans put together so we can have a really good idea and a pretty strong estimate of those costs. And then the last thing, last couple of things on Mariam Grand Station, working on doing the intersection improvement plans for EB Street and Shaw Mission Parkway. Obviously, Shaw Mission Parkway, as we all know, is KDOT's road, so they get the opportunity to review and approve those plans. So we're getting closer and closer to getting KDOT's approval on those proposed interchange, excuse me, intersection improvements. And the last thing, again, working with Drake Development to get the permits for them to start going vertical in construction of the apartment complexes, the two apartment buildings, and then the parking structure that goes between them. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Dyer?
Okay, I see no, no questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Director. All right, well, actually, I don't want to put Chief Cusick on, on this podium. But we have a gentleman, and currently, as we all know, Chief Deener has retired, and Chief Brad Cusick is with us today. Would you mind introducing yourself, Brad, and our Chief Cusick, and just let us know kind of the process of kind of, he's currently in the interim for at least six weeks, and tell us what's going to go on that?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Brad Cusick. I am the interim chief with Ovaland Park Fire Department. I've been with the department for 21 years. I've served as the deputy chief of administration for the last seven years. So the process, as it's been explained to me, is that I will be serving as the interim chief for a six-week period of time. And then the other deputy, we have two deputies, myself and the Chief Allen Long, who's the deputy. And then the other deputy, we have two deputies, myself and the Chief Alan Long, who's the deputy of operations. He will then serve as six weeks, and at the end of this twelve-week period, we'll have a process and determine who the next chief is going to be. And I also understand that Mr. Engel will be sitting in on that process. Happy to answer any questions.
So we don't have any questions for Chief Cusick?
Sorry to put you on the spot there, but thanks for coming forward.
Thank you all.
Mr. Engel, do we have anything else?
Oh, two items. One, I finally have a draft of the TIF policy back from our financial folks. So I will be putting that on one of the next couple agendas. I know that's been talked about and asked about, so I wanted to let you know it's coming soon. The other one is I will be out of the office starting Wednesday afternoon and will not be back until Tuesday. It is my daughter's last volleyball nationals before she graduates and goes to college. Volleyball will not be over by any means, but club volleyball will be over effective Monday. So I will be in Columbus, I'll be available by phone, but Jennifer will be here, as well as a lot of great staff to answer your questions and help you with any help that you need while I'm out of town. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Engel?
I see no questions. Good luck for upcoming volleyball. Okay, well, having said that, I don't think there's anything else, that there is no executive session this evening, so I wouldn't entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Okay, Ms. Hands and Ms. Adrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Motion second, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
I.
Meetings adjourned.